I will call the order this Fairfield Plan and Zoning Commission Special Meeting for Tuesday, February fourth, twenty twenty four. Twenty five.
Was my name called?
It was, but I don't know why, so don't worry about it. We'll call the first item forty-three Chamber Street, forty-six Weber Street, special permit application.
That sounds like me from like minutes ago.
Can you hear me?
Kathy, I think your phone has feedback.
I'm trying to turn off my computer because I couldn't get it working. Now there's, I got it on three devices now, so. None of them are working well.
I will call the order this Fairfield. Kathy, you gotta get off except for one device.
I know, I'm trying to like, I'll just shut down the computer. There we go. Okay, that's off. The other phone's off, so this should be the only one I'm using.
Okay.
Is that okay?
Yes, we can hear you. So special permit applica- okay, sorry, calling again, special permission application. Forty-three Chamber Street LLC pertains to the construction of a contractor's storage and maintenance building in the design industrial district. Good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, Brian Leclerc, Burcham Moses. Uh, thank you first of all for having a special meeting. Yeah, we appreciate this. I know with your agenda and the backlog, you have a lot coming up. Been doing a lot, so thank you for the extra meeting. Uh, forty-three Chamber Street is a parcel that was combined. Uh, it was usually known as forty-three Chambers and forty-three Chambers and forty-six Webster Street. Now it's one parcel that goes all the way through. Both those streets run between Commerce Drive and Johnson, as you know, it's it's our design industrial district that we have in Fairfield. That's our only DI district in that area. But that is a DI district, as you know. Uh, what we're proposing is in full conformity with the zoning regulations. What your regulations require, as you know, a special permit for any new construction in the DI zone or reconstruction in the DI zone. Uh, we're going to be in full conformity with the regs for everything from setbacks to coverage to building height. Uh, Andrew Becker, who is here, uh, he's also the owner of Becker Companies LLC. He's the principal of the applicant in this case, the LLC that owns the property. Uh, Becker Companies is going to be the tenant of this project once it's built. Uh, they're landscaping, excavation, basentry, and a site work contractor, and they do work for a number of businesses, you know, in the area. Fairfield Housing Authority, Westport Housing Authority, the Town of Fairfield, and the Fairfield Board of Education. This is going to be an equipment storage and maintenance building, uh, that they're building there, and it's, uh, they're going to have storage of various materials outside in a few covered exterior bins. Depending on the time of the year, it would either be mulch, topsoil, salt, or sand, depending on what they need for their business. There's no retail sale. This is not a retail facility at all. The hours of the business from April to November are about seven thirty in the morning till five thirty at nighttime. Uh, during the winter, the hours are greatly reduced. You're just going to have the workers who take the trucks out, come park their vehicles, pick up their truck for the day, and go off and do their daily activities for Becker Companies. Uh, the traffic is going to flow through both streets, Webster and Chambers, so there shouldn't be any problem with the the volume of traffic, given what's there now and what's always been there. The building, as you know from the plans, is going to have a combination of a decorative stone base with a metal structure above it. It's going to blend in with the neighbor buildings such as thirty-five Webster, fifty-three Webster, and five-twenty Commerce Drive. Uh, the storage bins are going to be covered in materials that actually match the building itself, the same exterior materials. And basically, we think this is going to be a major improvement to what was there, and it's going to be the stepping stone for new development in this area for industrial use uses. Uh, and a benchmark for how things probably should look and be developed in that area. The location, the type, the character, and the size of the building and structures are going to be in harmony with this neighborhood, with the district, and promote the orderly development of this district that we have. It should do nothing but improve the value of the adjacent properties as well. As you know, by going in that area, there are some dilapidated rundown, old commercial uses, industrial uses that, uh, this is going to be a modern sort that should affect all those properties. It's an industrial area. It's going to be a great improvement over what's there. And we just asked that this application be approved. I have Mr. Becker here. If you have any questions about business to use, we'd be glad to answer any of those. Thank you.
Thank you. My commission.
Yeah, so, um, under the code enforcement minutes, there were a number of open items. Those items been addressed? Specifically under, um, the line of questions.
Lastly, uh, turn it clear.
Yes, I turn it like, uh, under, under the, um, code enforcement minutes, which we received, um, for this package, meeting date December fifth. Um, I'm planning zoning specifically for questions, uh, I think items one through eighteen. Uh, were those items addressed?
Yeah, anything from our initial meeting, we talked about some of them, um, were questions, not issues to change. Um, as far as like if sprinkler system was required from building and things like that, which it's it's not by the state code, there was just a question on the the use type, I think. I I don't, there was, there was a question on the storm drain, whether it was a twenty-five or fifty-year, I think, and that got answered. So I mean, as far as I, everything from that sheet, but I I don't typically have it in writing, but.
Pull that up to yourself, by the way.
Sorry, Andrew, Andrew Becker.
Yes, it's it's the code enforcement minutes, December fifth, twenty twenty-three.
Thank you, Mr. Herges. As far as you know, any open items at that code meeting were either addressed or questions were answered. Will be addressed, excuse me, or questions had been answered to someone's satisfaction.
It's my understanding, yes.
Anything specific, go ahead, Mr. Herges.
I just want to make sure and I just wasn't sure whether that was confirmed in writing or.
I think it's at the low merger.
There were eighteen items on there. Quite a, quite a number, large number.
We don't normally often get, so we're second reports, like everything's been addressed. It's asked a question. Have they just dressed? Yes, we get sign-offs for, you know, equips, yeah, engineering or fire, everything's static.
Yeah, um, I could pull that up, I can. If I pull, I can.
Go through each one of them. Okay, there there were a lot of open.
Yeah, it's my understanding, so, so, um, I I took that list, we went back to the the engineer, anything that needed to be changed on that side of it and the and the design side of it, um, was addressed.
Okay, so there's no, you've got no exceptions to this list. Correct?
No exceptions.
You're, you're.
Correct. Everything, everything we we are building should be in 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 conformance, yes.
Thank you, Bron.
Yes, um, so the, the the code review was done like about a year ago. I- is there a reason it took this long? Was there a problem getting it through engineering or the is, has the DEP been applied for yet? They need a DEP permit for some of this DEP? For the drainage system, I guess.
We don't need the DEP permit, um, and honestly, we are a a busy company and and, uh, you know, trying to do project like this in in our spare time, more or less trying to put, push along and and, uh, so just, just, you know, the fact that we would send something and then I'd get an answer and I couldn't get back to my, you know, engineer or, you know, in in a certain amount of time or waiting on an answer from one of the departments or whatever, and it just took time. Um, that there, there was no delay from any, um.
No design or any issues. It was just that.
I got you.
They're
Just the progression.
Lucky to be have been busy.
It's been about a six, what, eight, it's been eight years since we originally purchased the land, and it's just a, a long process of trying to do a lot of things.
Is this, um, going to replay? There's a, I'm looking at a Google, uh, view. It, there's like a yellow house there, and then there's some commercial activity. This is combining a lot front and back. Is the yellow house being demolished to create this warehouse?
The two, the two houses are, were demoed, uh.
Already.
One, three years ago, one, two years ago, I think.
That's weird. They still show up on Google. That's odd, but, um, so what's there now? Are you using it now for your business?
Yeah, it's currently, uh, an open lot. Uh, there's some, uh, temporary, uh, shipping containers that, uh, we work out of, and then just truck parking.
Because that's weird, okay. Um, and, um, it says that you needed a DEEP permit. Is, is that in process?
I believe we do, but if we do, we will get it.
That's what the sewer, the WPCA said that. Um, and for engineering, they said it has, the drainage system has to be designed for a fifty-year storm event because of commercial property. Um, can you, I don't think I saw anything from engineering. If there is, just point it out to me. I I don't think I saw it in the material. That would be nice to provide to us when, if you do have it.
I I can say that the engineer, uh, the the engineering on the stormwater system was already in compliance for fifty years. It was an error on the original paperwork for twenty-five, so my engineer was able to just reconfirm the calculations and tell me that it was fifty years and corrected that. So in the stormwater packet should be a fifty, it would say now, everything will say fifty year.
And you were supposed to revise calculations and details of bio swales. That was, the town engineer had those comments. Would it be possible to get something from the town engineer in writing so we can confirm that they've looked at your revised plans and they're okay?
You can certainly ask for that.
That'd be great. And then this, this is not a coastal site review. A lot of things in that area are, but this is not correct. It's not close enough to any water, Long Island Sound, right?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Any comments or questions in the commission? Well. I suspect this is your presentation.
Can we hear from, uh, our staff to see if the eighteen questions they had were, were handled?
The applicant said as much, and if there's any issues, we can certainly do that after the hearing, talking to staff.
Well, two of them related to flood, number seventeen and eighteen. That this is in a flood zone, show compliance with flood construction requirements and resistant materials. Also, one of the plans showed an increase in site grades, which is not allowed in a FEMA floodplain. Maybe Ms. Harrigan can just let us know if this has been addressed. I'm sure it has been, but I would just like to know.
I believe in our conversations with the applicant, that's why they were providing swales. So they were, if they had to increase the grade in certain areas, they were going to provide, um, storage depressions through the rain gardens that were being provided.
The final, the final grade plan is a zero increase. We change, we we were able to adapt. Uh, when, just to clarify, so uh, my business, a lot of this is on the backend. We get a set of plans, we build to the plans, right? So, so part of that code enforcement meeting was a learning curve and of understanding of requirements for certain things. Um, so there was a lot of questions, but a lot of them were like I, I didn't personally know exactly what we needed for this meeting, so, so a lot of those were answering certain questions. So we took the feedback per se and made sure that the plan set that you have in front of you is corrected and to be.
And and I appreciate that, and I, it's hard to do when you're running the business, right? So, but, um, I do see that the drainage report is done quite a bit after the code review was done, so I'm assuming it complies with all those requirements. I would just like to get some confirmant confirmation from the people that are experts in our town, that that it's okay with them.
We can do that.
We will do that.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Very good. Any other questions? We're all set.
We are, thank you.
It's all set. I'll close the initial presentation portion of this application. Open up the public comment. Is there any member of the public that wishes to be heard on this application, forty-three Chamber Street, forty-six Weber, Webster Street? In person, assume you're with them, right? Any public comments? Seeing nobody in person. Is there anybody joining us remotely by phone that wishes to be heard in this application? You've got to be the public. Public comment is open for forty-three Chamber Street, forty-six Weber Street. Please identify yourself if you're joining us remotely or by phone. Press star six to unmute yourself if you're on phone. Any member of the public wish to be heard in this application? Here, no, no, close the public comment portion of this application. Anything further?
No, sir, thank you.
So I think we're all set with this. I'll close the hearing on this matter.
Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you guys, thank you.
Next item is zoning regulations amendment, application of Fairfield Medical LLC. Amendment section twenty-nine point eight point two, it's zoning regulations with regard to signs visible located in a design commercial district, section twenty-nine point ten point one with regard to size and size, wall size, or the single. Take a quick minute.
Chair.
Okay.
Set of the whole.
No worries. Nice to see a trifle.
It's not the most reliable.
We're in Tomlinson, that's all we got, right? Everybody else in Tomlinson, you were, right? Tomlinson, we're in Tomlinson School for this? Was it McKinley? Oh, I'm sorry, I said Tomlinson McKinley. You guys in McKinley? It's just old school or. After primary, the AC was going. You didn't realize how loud it was until it went off. It felt like.
It's better when they had sporting events on the other side.
Oh, that's true. You're right. I forgot about that.
Did you have their TV?
Their TV was there in person, too.
Yeah, I used to walk in front of the camera all the time.
Yeah, but it was.
Okay, Chairman, members of the commission, Chris Russo, uh, with Russo Rizzo LLC, offices at San Sasco Hill Road in Fairfield here on behalf of, uh, the applicant, uh, for this text amendment. Uh, this is a amendment that is for a limited expansion of the location for commercial signs. Um, as if you read the first revision, which is twenty-nine, uh, to twenty-nine point eight point two, which concerns signs, um, uh, abutting connected turnpike in Merritt Parkway. Uh, this amendment applies only to properties abutting, um, Merritt Parkway, uh, or its access roads um, within a commercial district. So if you look at, uh, this zoning map, it's the northern part of Fairfield. Uh, you can see this purple line that runs across the town, and, uh, that is, uh, the Merritt Parkway. And see, it's mostly triple A, it's double A, it's R three. This revi- uh, this is, um, design research, and these, uh, ones in brown are design, uh, residence, uh, district. So this change doesn't apply to any of those areas. It is only applying to the commercial district that abuts the Merritt Parkway, um, which is right here. And a zoomed-in version of that district, you could see, uh, it's right there. And that is the location, um, of two commercial properties that that comprise of this district. Um, the HiHo building, which already probably has the most iconic sign in Fairfield anyway. Um, which actually I heard when it was, uh, taken down for repairs, I think it was back in like twenty seventeen. Um, uh, it actually, people called to complain because they thought the town was forcing HiHo to take down the sign, and they said this is an iconic sign to Fairfield. So put it back up, which it was just being repaired. It was going back up, but, um, uh, it's been there for decades. Uh, HiHo was built in the nineteen sixties. Um, it's obviously been a a signature feature, uh, in the town. So one of the properties already has a commercial sign. Um, the other location, uh, other property is where the Hartford Healthcare Building is. Um, it's, it's an historically commercial property. That's where the plant factory used to be. Um, so, uh, it's, it's, it's very limited, uh, as far as what this, uh, this amendment is is proposing. Um, and another important thing I think about this district, uh, is it, it really doesn't directly abut the merit. And I know you all went through a long application on on this property, so I think you've had this discussion before. Um, but, uh, there are two heavily wooded areas, uh, in between, um, the merit and both the HiHo and, uh, where the Hartford Healthcare, uh, building is 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 currently being built. Um, the HiHo itself is basically just at the very end of the ramp, and I think technically is on Congress Street. Um, uh, so they, they're, they're not, uh, properties that directly, uh, abut. Um, and then, you know, when I, when you look at the rest of the Merritt Parkway, uh, I think Fairfield is one of the least intrusive uh, towns to development along, um, the Merritt Parkway. Uh, this commission has always been very respectful in 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 trying to, um, preserve the character of the Merritt Parkway. Uh, I was involved in, uh, the application for five-five-four-five Park Avenue. You, those of you who were on the commission for that probably remember all the discussion we had, uh, at that time with regards to that development. Um, but I think if you look and if, Emily, and if I could share
Go ahead.
My screen.
We're gonna make it look. Start getting the attorneys to do that, then. No, I mean, that just makes a lot of sense, so they can actually Yeah. highlight things. I wasn't, didn't, wasn't really aware that they could do that.
As long as we don't.
I'm lifting. I got some tricks on my sleeve.
I, we gotta start pushing for that for the attorneys, then, okay.
Uh, so these are some pictures, hopefully you could, you could see from that distance, but these are just shots from along, along the Merritt Parkway. Um, you can see the top one is, uh, right before you get into the tunnel, if you're, um, uh, you know, over by, uh, New Haven. Uh, that's where Cat's Deli is on the top. Um, then on the, on the bottom is the building where Sam Ash Music is. They have a sign right there. Um, let me switch to the next slide. This is Norwalk, um, should switch there, there we go. Uh, that is a new apartment building, to my understanding, that's built right up against Merritt Parkway. Um, there's on this, on the bottom of the page is, um, the Merritt View Building, uh, and you could see it's, it's a little, it's a little tough from that distance, but there's a, there's a Merritt View sign that's up on the upper story there. You can't really see the details of it, but it's, it's right there. There's also a number of signage slash billboards. There's a Red Roof Inn, um, which is in, uh, Meriden. Um, down here on the bottom left is, uh, the Chick-fil-A sign that's over by Wallingford. Uh, and then here on this right-hand side, you could see, um, that's in orange where the University of New Haven campus is. There's that sign that just, it's only facing towards, uh, Merritt Parkway. There's the Sikorski sign. Uh, it's a large sign. It extends above the the top of the building. Um, and a lighted sign as well. Um, and, uh, as you all have driven by Sikorski, you know how open that area is and that you can look into it. Um, on the bottom is Trumbull Mall, which there are some trees there, but generally you could see through them to see the Macy's sign, uh, and other signs that they have. Over in the Oakdale area in Wallingford, uh, there's a number of bil- buildings that are right along the Merritt Parkway. Um, and and the theater itself, uh, the Oakdale Theater itself, um, and you could see, you know, on one of these buildings on the top, uh, there's signage that's facing towards the the Merritt Parkway. Then the final one is, um, that's over in Hampden. You can see another large building, office building that is right near the Merritt Parkway. And then on the bottom is actually another Hartford Healthcare Building, uh, that the signage can be viewed from, uh, the Merritt Parkway. So all to say, because I know you've all driven um, through this section, uh, through Fairfield along the Merritt Parkway. It's the amount of development, the amount of commercial development along the Merritt Parkway in Fairfield is extremely limited. Obviously, it's only limited, I mean, it's limited to these, these two properties as of right now. So, um, this isn't a, a huge expansion, especially considering one property already has, uh, you know, the the HiHo motel sign. Um, the site itself looking from the merit is also well-screened. We're going back to old school now. Um, these are just some Google images. This is if you're heading northbound, even though you're in the southbound lane here, but if you're heading north, uh, you're heading northbound and you're, so you're south here of the commercial district. This is the on-ramp onto the Merritt Parkway. Um, you can see through these trees, they're right here, and I blew it up. That's the retaining wall for the Hartford Healthcare Building. So it's a very limited view right there as you head north. Here is looking straight, uh, down Black Rock Turnpike. This is looking north, so HiHo's here. The Hartford Healthcare Building is over here. Um, again, really limited view there, uh, especially when the leaves are out. And then looking south, uh, there's no commercial properties. It's just that parking lot there, and then there's a significant rotaries. So it it's a, it's a well buffered site when you look at it compared to a well buffered district, I should say, when you look compared to other locations along the Merritt Parkway. And then that's just, I don't need to show anybody that really, but that's just the view of the hotel HiHo sign when you get north of that, that commercial district. Um, and this is at the very bottom of the ramp to be able to, uh, see it like that. In this Google image, you could just start seeing the, uh, construction for the, um, Hartford Healthcare, uh, building. So we think this is a, a very limited targeted expansion of where commercial signs would be allowed. Um, it, there's still the overwhelming predominant amount where this is not expanding it to along the Merritt Parkway. It doesn't expand it to, uh, one exit down over by where Sacred Heart, um, or the new Sacred Heart campuses, and it doesn't expand it down to Park Ave. So with that, I'll turn to the standards that we're also, uh, requesting, uh, a change. Um, which is, uh, a few here, you can see in twenty-nine point ten point one. Um, the first is talks about the size of letters, figures, devices, um, which I'm not really sure what devices is, but letters and figures shall, uh, not exceed a height of three, uh, feet for a single line of copy or two feet for multiple lines of copy. Um, what we're requesting is to strike the two feet for multiple lines. You know, basically, if somebody's coming for a sign application, they have a, they have an area to work with, and they can choose to go less than three feet and and maybe be able to fit in more words, more texts, more logos, um, or they could, um, have it at three feet, which is the max. And if they do that, it will meet, it will eat into more of the area, but that would just kind of let it be their prerogative. Um, and and whether they want to eat up that area with with larger letters, but it's not giving you letters or figures that aren't already allowed. Um, it's, it's just removing the two feet step down. It'll just keep it at three feet. And then the next is regarding, um, the overall area of wall signs. So just to, to go through that, it, it's, uh, last sentence there, the second paragraph. A sign may occupy up to twenty percent of the area of the wall to which it is attached, or seventy-two square feet, whichever is less. Except each wall sign on a single tenant building, which contains multiple stories, may occupy up to fifteen percent of the area of the wall to which it is attached. So the interesting thing about what the regs do right now is if you have a multiple tenant building, such as the Old Navy Building, um, that has multiple tenants, and they all have signs on their same wall. And they're limited, um, uh, Old Navy's bigger. I, I don't know if they got it variance or how they got it, but, but under the regs, they're supposed to be limited to seventy-two square feet or twenty percent of their tenant wall. So if their wall is, let's say their store is like thirty feet and, uh, I'm gonna have to do math, which isn't gonna work for me, but, but you, you, you take twenty percent of basically whatever that that section of your wall is. So you could have, like you do at that Old Navy Building, seventy-two square foot sign, seventy-two square foot sign, seventy-two square foot sign, and down, down line. Now, a larger building that has Now, a larger building that has, that's of the size of maybe the Old Navy Building, that is a single tenant building under the current regs. Is just allowed either seventy two square feet or twenty percent of the wall area. Which in the case of a single tenant building, is probably going to be much more than the seventy two square feet. They're limited to the seventy two square foot foot sign. So they're only allowed to have that same little one sign. That you see multiple times on the Old Navy Building. They would only be limited to one, just because they're a single tenant. And so what this, I think, does is create an appropriate exception. For just single tenant buildings. Which contain multiple stories. So again, it's something where. It's got a little bit more size, so the sign is not going to dominate the wall face. And we actually, instead of keeping it at the twenty percent, that is, you know, the other part of the reg, we stepped it down to fifteen percent. Again, we're trying to to be respectful that you don't want a sign to dominate a wall. But at the same point, if it's a single tenant and it's multiple stories, we do feel that that's an appropriate size increase. Where the sign will fit the building. And then the last change is at the very end. Where the regs currently say in multiple story buildings, no sign shall be located above the ground floor level. We're adding, asking to add in the language, except on a single tenant building. I know that, especially in multiple tenant buildings. It could be confusing if there's, let's say there's a two-story building. And you put in Russo and Rizzo on the second floor. You put a sign for Russo and Rizzo on the second floor, but Russo and Rizzo is actually on the first floor. And there's, you know, you know, Dr. Russo on the second floor. It can be confusing because the sign's up there. And there are certain, there's a building I'll show you actually. Where the Center for Varicose Veins is on. On Black Rock Turnpike, where you could see that could be confusing for people who are going to a certain tenant. If there's a multiple tenant building. And it's like, oh, well, are they on the second floor? No, they're actually on the first. But with a single tenant building and a multiple story building, that's not confusing. They have the entire building. You're just entering their, you know, wherever you go in, that's their main entrance. That's where they are. On that point, if I can go back to sharing. I do have signs throughout the town, just to show that allowing. Those types of signs would not be out of character with what we have in the town. Second share. Okay, back to the screen. So in the top left. You see the Aldi's building. Now, that tenant dominates that area. It is a single story, but it's obviously a much increased single story. So this is above your typical first floor sign. It's up there. To the right of it is the Bank of America Building, which is on Black Rock Turnpike. That is a multiple tenant building. Bank of America is the dominant tenant there, but they have a sign that's on the upper story. The next is the Bankwell Building in the bottom left, which is also on Black Rock Turnpike. There's the BJ's Building, which again, it's a single floor, but. That's obviously above your traditional first floor level. Ob Store in the top left. The Floor and Decor Store that's on the, I think that's that's the storefront that's next to Aldi's. Dominates a large portion of that building. That's on what is typically would be your second floor. On the bottom is that Old Navy Building. Again, signs going down the line there with the Old Navy and the Gap sign being higher up. And then my final picture, I think. Yeah. It's the Shoprite that's on Black Rock Turnpike. Again, placed in a location where you would typically have a second story, Whole Foods. There's that building that's on Black Rock Turnpike. You can see it's got two signs, one above the other. The bottom is the urgent care sign that's for Yale, New Haven Health. And then above it is the Center for Varicose Veins. And then in the bottom right. Is the Bigelow T Building, which has. A sign, a rather large sign. And on its upper story. So we don't think it's something that's out of character. With signs that you see, particularly if you think about Bigelow T as a single tenant building. You know, that's a sign, it's a large sign. It doesn't dominate the facade. It's on an upper story. And 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 basically, that's that's the kind of sign that. That this would allow.
I'm trying to do the math and I'm not too familiar with signs. Can you explain again? So the bold part of the regulation is your adder, right? It's not underlying, it's just bolded. So a single tenant building. In our current regulations, which is what you have, right? Can have up to twenty percent of the area of the wall or seventy two feet, whichever is less. But you're saying now it would be less fifteen percent? I'm confused about that. You're adding something that makes it smaller. I must be doing something wrong.
No, what what it's saying is. Except a wall sign where it's a single tenant building which contains multiple stories. That a wall sign could occupy fifteen percent of area of that wall. Whereas right now, if you just took the language that's not in bold. It's seventy two square feet generally because the measurement is either twenty percent of the area of the wall. Or seventy two square feet, whichever is less. And in single tenant buildings. The twenty percent of the wall area might be a lot more. But because it's got the seventy two square foot restriction and it says whichever is less, it brings it down. To seventy two square feet. So, you know, as an example, the Hartford Healthcare Building. It's a twenty five thousand square foot building. Under the current regs, it would only be allowed a seventy two square foot sign. Which, you know, is is very small for that building.
What's the area of the wall that you were talking about and what would be the size of the sign?
If you did the, well, if you did the twenty percent, I'd have to do that out. But if you did the fifteen percent, that would come out to three hundred and fifteen square feet. But again, it's only fifteen percent of that total wall.
And that would be facing the Merritt Parkway?
And it would be, under this reg, would be permitted to face towards the Merritt Parkway.
And is there any design element like neon or colors or, you know, like the.
We're not asking to change your your design standards as far as the sign. So it's still the channel lettering. That you currently allow. In fact, I think when the, when the Hi Ho sign was changed, it was changed to. Conform with that and have the channel lettering. It got rid of the old neon. And so it it would allow the same for for that building as well.
When you say wall, the wall that is on, is that the whole? That that medical building has a lot of nooks and crannies in it. It's not one big wall.
Right, so it would either be, yeah, there's, there's, there's two walls it could technically apply to. The one that's directly parallel, if you remember that building.
Yeah.
The one that's directly parallel with the Merritt. And then it cur, you know, it comes in, it doesn't curve it, it just kind of slants. Pulls away from the Merritt Parkway. It could go on that wall, but you would just measure. That section of the wall. You wouldn't be able to take like. All the walls and put it together. You, whatever wall you're on, you're just allowed to measure that that area.
You would put it on the wall facing the Merritt, which is more of a flat wall as opposed to the front wall facing the Hi Ho? Because that's kind of like, got a lot of entryways and.
Well, that, but then there there's, yeah, so there's an interim wall between those. There's the flat wall that's parallel to the, to the Merritt. Then there's the one that's on a slant, and then there's a wall that's facing straight at the Hi Ho. So they, the, under this reg, it would allow them, they could either do it on that wall along Black Rock Turnpike. The slanted wall that that, you know, is at an angle from the Merritt Parkway. Or the wall that is parallel to the Merritt.
And which wall do you think, so you could have, according to the reg, two signs on a single tenant building. They can't be on the same wall, but either one, would they be three hundred fifty square feet?
Well, it depends on whatever fifteen percent of the, that that particular wall is. I know, I know a wall, the wall that is. The wall that is at a slant, at an angle there. Is about thirty by seventy, and that that would be the one that would allow around three hundred fifteen square feet of signage. I'm sorry, can you say that again? So, so if you had a wall. That was thirty feet high by seventy feet wide. That's twenty one hundred square feet of wall. And that would allow a sign that's three hundred fifteen square feet.
But that's just the sign. The lettering would be three feet tall.
The lettering would be, still have the three foot restriction on it, correct?
And that, you're, the only thing you're changing for that is striking the two foot.
Two foot.
So it'd just be three, so even if it's. So even if it was a thousand square feet, the lettering can only be three feet.
It could be a maximum of three feet, which you currently allow. It just, if they're gonna do. Three feet above three feet, like so. You have multiple leads of three feet. You're just eating into your area more. And that's really what we're just saying, if they, if they choose to. Take up their area that way, you know, this would give them the opportunity to do that, but it's still not something that. You know, you're not all of a sudden, you're not, you're not seeing anything that you don't already allow. In the rest of the town as far as. That you're high.
Commissioner Harrison.
That makes sense.
Yeah, thank you. I I guess I'm just, and I appreciate your presentation. I didn't see any of these pictures in the. Applic, in the application online. Will you make that available to us?
Yes, absolutely. Yeah, we can submit them.
Do you have a rendering of the sign? I didn't see anything of that nature either.
Yeah, I I can show that, you know, knowing that it is a text amendment application, but just to show you. Hypothetically, exactly. So actually, I probably should have showed this. Could you zoom in on that?
Take her off the video, we can make that bigger.
Thank you.
Just one second here.
Alexis, I'm just gonna stop your video temporarily.
Thanks.
There you go.
Thank you. Little better. It would be helpful to have this in the packet if you, if you don't mind. I know it's hypothetical.
Right, right. Well, I could submit it since it's being shown. Is that good? Generally, you could kind of see it, so. Merritt Parkway is running this way. There's a wall here. That runs parallel to Merritt Parkway. Then there's an angled wall, why I was calling the angled wall. That, you know, partially faces the Merritt, obviously, because it's over there. And then there's this wall here. Which faces Black Rock Turnpike.
I'm familiar with the logo of of the medical, you know, of the brand, but I'm curious. What kind of illumination would it be at night?
It's the channel lettering that, and I could show you. I have a, I have a rendering of what it looks like at at night. But it's the channel lettering that's currently allowed under the regs. So, yeah, thanks, Emily. So. What you could see here, again. It's a large building, single tenant. And it's multiple stories. So this is the the sign that that reg would theoretically permit.
Three foot lettering.
So this is, yeah, this is a good way to show that, Chair. So Hartford here would be. A maximum of three feet. Healthcare would also be permitted to be three feet. And this logo would also be permitted to be three feet. And this section, I mean, this lettering is actually less than three feet, but. You know, it theoretically would.
Where's that blue one?
So what it says is a care partner of Memorial Sloan Kettering Cancer Center. You know, this is something, again, we're talking about text amendment application, but. It's, it's a pretty big deal for Hartford Healthcare. Hartford Healthcare has entered into this partnership with Sloan Kettering. It's going to allow. Patients there to receive the cutting edge cancer treatments. That Sloan Kettering offers their clinical trials. People are going to be able to get chemo, radiation therapy. So it's, it's, it's a significant deal and and.
They don't have to go to New York City.
They don't have to go to New York City. Because of that.
Yep.
It is going to attract. You know, people and and probably some people from out of town. So that's why we feel, again, it's a commercial district. It's, it's an appropriate signage to let people know it's there. Because if you, if you're, if you're familiar with Fairfield, you know where it is. But if you're not. Again, it's not the, it's not right there in your face. So this, this signage does help people identify it. And. And yeah, so I, we, we.
Is it on the other side too? Is that what I'm seeing on the bottom? Is that the other side or that's the same?
Yeah, I don't know why, yeah, I don't know why that's actually there. That might be a different option for it, but.
Okay.
This is the, I I know, having talked to my client on this, that's, this is the sign that they're looking for. And I can show you, Commissioner Harrison.
This, Mr. Chairman, I have, can you go back?
Yeah, sure.
This is Jim Went for the record, just for, this may help. Mission, the way the sign regulations measure the overall size of a sign is the largest rectangle. You would draw around the entirety of that image. So starting at Hartford Healthcare on the left, all the way to the right to where the Sloan Kettering image is. You would draw a rectangle around the entirety of that. That's where the overall sign size calculation comes from. So even though that may be a big number, there's a lot of dead space, if you will, that gets captured in the way we we. Count sign size.
Right. So this is, yeah, so this part of it here is counted in, you know, even though that's, that's glass.
So hypothetically, though, it looks like two signs. It's one side on one wall. One side.
One side on one wall. We don't, if if they applied for this, they would not get the benefit of this area here. Right, right, Jim? They, they, this would be counted in their figure. So it's, you know, three hundred fifteen square feet. But there's, there's chunk of, there's chunks of this that are, that are glass.
How does the height of that? If you don't mind me asking, go ahead. This height of that sign compared to the height of the Hi Ho sign?
Well, this, I don't know if they're at the same, they're about at the same grade, I think, now, and.
I mean, if I'm driving.
Right.
Like I always do. Merritt, and I see the Hi Ho sign. It's very visible.
Well, the Hi Ho letters have to be close to ten feet tall.
Right, so. What am I looking at? The big difference with the Hi Ho sign is. There are, I think the properties are about at the same grade if you look at them here. The, there's the two stories of the motel, and then the Hi Ho sign is above it, and it's protruding above the roof line. You can see, here's the first floor of the Hartford Healthcare Building. Here's the second floor. So that sign is below the the roof line over here. So it's, I, I. I don't have the exact grade measurements for these. But my educated guess would be that this sign is significantly lower than the Hi Ho sign.
I think it's more about size too. It's significantly smaller.
Correct. Yeah, yeah, for for sure, for sure.
So. Going back to the wall. Comfortable with the rain, this is even for staff and for. We would only want, I think, one wall, that one wall that you have the hypothetical sign on. Counted in the. Currently has that to be counted for it. You got the two that are kind of angled, that are kind of. Are we comfortable with the language that it's one wall? And if there's any degree off of that wall, that's not to be counted. You understand what I mean? Like, I don't want the other.
You want this to be tied into.
I don't want those wings to be tied in. All of a sudden, we have something that's extra wall, so to speak, so.
Well, under the text amendment, you could have that sign and you could have one on the other wall, right?
You could, yeah, I think you're allowed up to two wall signs.
But again, this is, if you are looking to restrict this opportunity to a single wall, I think you would need to. Add a clarifying.
Yeah.
You could make it more restrictive by saying. You can only do this, have a single wall sign that meets this criteria rather than two.
Or only one wall sign would be allowed.
Or you could even, if, and we would have no objection to this.
I assume not, because you would, I mean, tell us now, because.
On the Merritt Parkway. Where it talks about, except for lots which are but the right of way or access road of the Merritt Parkway and are located within the design. Commercial district, if something was added along lines of. Restricted to one wall sign that faces the Merritt Parkway. Restricted to one wall sign that faces the Mayor Parkway. So that would, if 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 there was a sign here, it would not be allowed here.
And we're not counting those extra wings as part.
Not counting the extra wings. I I I think your regs would protect you from that anyway already. You wouldn't be able to count this wall, because there's definitely a clear. Difference.
I would, there's there's, there's multiple layers to this question, as I'm understanding it. So. We would capture that curved wall as a single wall. For the purpose of the overall sign calculation, excluding those other walls. But if I understand your, correct me if I'm wrong, you're looking to only want a single application of this. Additional sign size rather than having it on multiple walls.
I think limiting it to one wall, I mean, certainly may maybe makes sense to some other, the uh. Other members of the public and Historic Commission, but it was also, it was both just either limiting it to one or making sure that. Those other wing walls aren't counted for that. Uh, that wall that you have the signs on, so, but as you, as it stands right now. Those two extra walls would not be counted for where that Hartford Healthcare wall is.
Correct, I don't think there's any change need be made. To determine how the overall size would be calculated, because we would treat that as three separate walls. For that size calculation. The the only question then is, do you want to limit the application to only one of those three, rather than having two out of three?
We can determine that, but the first part is the the more urgent, well, not urgent, but the more clarifying one is. We see three walls there, and it as our, right, I really.
Correct.
As our regulations currently stand, the amendments aren't changing that. Now it's up to the commission to determine whether if we make this amendment, that we just limited it to that, to a one wall, and that's something to discuss.
Limiting it to one wall, not. Not that the, not that the amendment applies to one wall, but only one wall would be allowed.
Fair enough, yeah.
Right, go ahead Alexis.
Yeah, Attorney, I just have a question. Um, what are the hours of the facility? Is it twenty four seven or? Does it close at five or six in the evening?
I'm not sure exactly, I could, because it's been kept open, I could. Uh, determine that, and I can let you know at the next meeting, um.
There's no emergency there, though, right?
But no, there's no emergency care as.
No, but I know like dialysis centers are sometimes open, you know, twenty four seven. I I was just curious, I guess.
I'm not sure, I mean, it's not controlled, I don't believe it's controlled by the sign reg right now as far as um.
I asked that because um one of the neighbors, um, Mr. McKenzie just raised issues about illumination at night and. I I was just curious if if it's turned off at a certain point, like what? The, maybe what you guys would concede to just as a good neighbor.
It isn't, but I think with that, I mean. The good news in that that neighbor's from Greenfield Hunt, Greenfield Hunt is. Over the hill there, and so this is.
Pretty close by, I mean, it's not just, yeah, I I, yeah.
But it's fa, this is facing directly away from, right, in the exact opposite direction at them, basically towards. The highway and and same thing here, and then this one right here is facing towards uh the Hi Ho. So, um. The oh, a a sign on the actual facade that's facing Greenfield Hunt would not be allowed. Um, under the regulations.
Thank you. And then just one more question, did you have any conversations with the Conservancy? The Merritt Parkway Conservancy, I know they were very active during the.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't talk, I I didn't talk to the Conservancy, I did briefly talk to Joel Green. Who I think is on and is is going to speak to it.
He's off right now because he went to the other meeting.
He went to the other me, he has another, he has a conflict meeting, which which I knew about, um, and um. And so we, he and I were able to touch base right before the meeting, um, but I'm I'm sure we'll talk.
Commissioner Harrison, to the extent.
No, no, thank you for your answers, uh, I I appreciate it, thank you.
But uh, we're gonna leave this open because Attorney Green wanted to present. On behalf of this historical commission next time, so. We'll be hearing from them.
And and just to answer, because because Commissioner Harrison, you had a couple other questions, I think, um. One, I'll just point on this page, just so you know for reference. So this. Is thirty two and a half feet tall, tall, sorry, tall, and it's seventy three feet wide. Just so you have some sense of.
Say again?
Uh, thirty two and a half feet tall. Seventy three feet wide.
Okay.
So which gives, on this one, gives it um like two thousand three hundred seventy eight square feet is, you know, again, just a theoretical example. And then um Commissioner Harrison, you asked for it at night. And this is the. Can you see that well enough?
Yeah, and it's not gonna, and you said, obviously, it's not in the same direction as Greenfield Hunt, so it doesn't seem like there'll be any issue.
Yeah, and it's the, it's the channel lettering that uh. That's permitted currently under your regs, and it's, that's what Hi Ho now has.
That, yeah, right, of course, got it, thank you.
Commissioner Randolph.
So, I I'm. I got a lot of questions. So wh- why are we not limiting the size of the sign in this district? You you're removing the seventy two square foot limitation, so theoretically, if a new tenant came in and. They wanted to put a a large sign in, on the other side, it would basically be unconstrained. So Hartford Healthcare moves out. Uh, we're in a special zone and the the, I guess the sidewall is larger, so it could be fifteen percent of that sidewall, correct?
If we. If a single tenant moved in is what you're saying. So if Hartford Healthcare moved out and Russo and Rizio moved in and took over the whole entire building. Russo and Rizio would be able to apply to you, um, to put their sign here.
So I I'm sorry. So we're writing a, you're you're asking us to. Write a text amendment that is essentially unique to this user in this location. Is that correct?
It's, it would allow it in a commercial district that abuts the Mayor Parkway. And it's specific to single tenant buildings. So again, if if Russo and Rizio moved in here and Hartford Healthcare moved out. This sign would have to come down. And then Russo and Rizio could come in and propose a sign that was fifteen percent of the area of the wall to which it's attached. I think maybe another part to answering your question, the the funny thing about the way the regs are now. If we took this building. And we just. Hartford Healthcare moved out and ten tenants moved in. Depending on what their wall area is, they could put in ten seventy two square foot signs. The current regs allow that now. So what I think these regs are doing is is specifically looking at single tenant buildings and the unique situation. That single tenant buildings are under.
That correct?
Yeah.
Yes and no. It it's correct if it weren't. Facing the Merritt Parkway.
Right.
Uh, on Black Rock Turnpike, anywhere other than abutting the Merritt Parkway, a multiple tenant building, every tenant's entitled to have their own wall sign up to seventy two square feet. In this case, the exception's being made for two reasons, A, to allow it to be. Primarily visible from the Merritt Parkway, and B, the exception would apply only to a single fan, a single tenant building. But we've got two names on here, which would imply two tenants. I I'm confused by.
Well, they're they're partners, so they're they're, it's one tenant, but they're 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 partners, so it's. It's a Hartford Healthcare is the, you know, main, but they're. What they're saying here, like in this one, is that they are a care partner. Of Memorial Sloan Kettering Cancer Center. Which is what they they have become.
And and uh, why do you want? This sign. As large to to be larger than the three foot lettering, I'm sorry, two foot lettering of copy, why?
Well, because you already allow three feet.
No, no, I'm saying, what is the business reason for this?
Well, I I think it's partly designed. I mean, if you could imagine, like, if we took this sign, for example, so. It's Hartford Healthcare. Under the current regs, this would have to be. Two feet. So it's, it it's, it's, it's just, it it's odd. I mean, if if you allow three feet and you're comfortable, if your regs are comfortable and say, three foot. Lettering is okay. If if we're allowed this area, if you permit this regulation and we're allowed this area, you know. Why not allow the the maximum line copy that you you currently allow?
I didn't, maybe I didn't ask my question clearly, why? Do you want a larger sign on this building?
We think this sign. Is appropriate for the size of the building.
No. Many of the the Merritt Parkway, I always thought it ended in Stratford. Ends in Stratford?
No, the Mayor Park, the Mayor Parkway, my understanding goes all the way to Meriden.
Because of Wilbur Cross Parkway, when you cross over the. Right, so the Conservancy's jurisdiction.
I'm not aware of that, if where their, if their jurisdiction continues to Wilbur Cross, I'm not, I'm not sure.
I don't know whether they do or they don't.
I'll have to look into that.
Ask that next week.
So regardless, just so you know, Norwalk, their signage uh as well, and Stamford and all that.
Too many hours on the.
Exactly.
Yes, um, but I I guess the the Conservancy has rules, and you cited. The worst case to make the stronger reason. So you cited the uh locations. You know, up in New Haven, the egregious. I saw locations as the example that you'd like us to follow in Fairfield. For an area that's regulated, and you specifically said. And I agree with you that Fairfield is one of the less. Cluttered areas. So you're suggesting that because other areas are cluttered, we should clutter our area? I'm not, I'm just not following you here.
Well, I just, you know, I know the the Conservancy sent in some comments, and I know Joel's gonna speak to it, and and what I I, I I'm just trying to express is is that. You know, I I think Fairfield has taken a lot of care in protecting the area around the Merritt Parkway. All you have is a very limited commercial district. Where we're proposing to expand, so yes, there are, there is much more significant. Development and signage along the Merritt Parkway, and. I I I think this stays with that uh intent and protection, because it's. There's already a sign that's very large on one of the properties. And again, these properties don't even abut the merit directly. They are, there's a wooded area that buffers between. The merit and where these buildings are.
Can you point that out? Because I.
Sure.
Know that.
So if you look here. Here's the merit. You have two large wooded areas here. That stand in between. There's some, like, you go to certain areas along the Merritt Parkway, there's development. Right on the merit, like, would be like right here, especially when you get into into like Norwalk. Um, uh, the the Westport Weston Y is. Got a clear view straight to the to the merit, but here. You have these two wooded pockets here that separate between, so these are but the merit, because here's uh, you know, the access road. Um, it's not even the merit, you know, proper, and then if you look at. Again, if you look at these, these, these street views. As you're going northbound, there's a very small pocket here where you can even see the building, um. And this is probably the best view to just see that there's a significant amount of woods here in between. Merritt and the Hi Ho building, uh, and the the Hartford Healthcare site. And the same thing. That's a Hi Ho, but you could see over here how these trees stand in the way of seeing the uh, the Hartford Healthcare building.
I I'm sorry, I'm just, I'm confused. So. You want a sign? That people can't see behind trees? I I'm just.
Well, and there are pockets, like, you you can't, like, there, there there are. There are pockets where you could still see the sign, and so I'm not saying that if you're driving on the merit, there's no way you're gonna see the Hartford Healthcare sign. But I do think it's not, it, the way that the properties are laid out, the way that where the district is, it's not. Right up against the merit and and in. Like, clearly visible. It it's, it, there's still gonna be some.
Asking my question clearly, because I, you're not. You know, understanding my question, why do you want two signs? That are non-compliant, and then lift the restriction for all future signs in this area to be essentially. The maximum, fifteen percent of the maximum size of the wall. I I don't imagine you're getting drive by customers, it's not. Like, even the Hi Ho probably doesn't get drive by customers, and the Hi Ho sign, you're using that as comparison, the Hi Ho sign is. Is that currently compliant with the regulations, or is that grandfathered in?
That's grandfathered, it was back from nineteen sixty.
Citing the Hi Ho as an example.
Well, just to show it's not out of character with what's in the district, there's already a sign, there's already a large sign there.
I guess I'm 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 just wondering, what's the motivation for having two signs that are larger? Uh, that's my question.
Well, I do think it is a destination, so this will help identify the site, even though it's limited in how much you could view it. This will help identify to people, hey, you have to go to this exit and you're going to the Hartford Healthcare. If you're from. I don't know, somewhere where you're not familiar with this, with this area, having that sign will help identify it. So. But if you can imagine, if you looked at. If you look at this facade and what the current regs would allow, but for the Merritt Parkway restriction, let's say it wasn't, that wasn't in place. Right now, the regs would limit this to a seventy two square foot sign on a twenty five thousand square foot building, that's two stories. I mean, that, it just doesn't seem proportional for. You know, for a building of that size, and again, when under the current regulations. If. Multiple tenants occupy this building, they could do seventy two square foot signs as twenty percent of their wall area. So you could have. You know, but for the Merritt Parkway restriction. You know, you could have eight seventy two square foot, ten to seventy two square foot, um, uh, tenant signs there.
To clarify that, is that limited to the ground floor, seventy two foot sign?
Yes. Yes.
So they could have, so the.
They they could have like a seventy two.
Vane sign and Black Rock Turnpike that you cited, here to not be compliant with that requirement.
Sorry.
The Bearcus Vane Walk-In Clinic on on. I guess it's uh, crippled woods and.
Uh, uh, yeah, it, um, yeah, I think it still doesn't end.
Sounds like it would not be compliant with what you just described.
I received the variance, it did, yeah, it received the variance, um.
But the point of this is then aesthetics, proportionality.
Right.
Um, visibility, and just of making a good sign that fits the facade of the building.
That fits, you know, that's proportional. Um, because I, you know, I haven't gotten to the PC of P O C D, and because when it talks about. Your signs, it says that you you ensure that it doesn't promote visual clutter. With this, we're looking at single tenant buildings, and there isn't the visual clutter that that though, that the P O C D is trying to. Um, avoid. I think this is streamlined, it's a single tenant, it's a large building, they're occupying fifteen percent of that wall area. Um, to properly identify that sign, um, for the size of that building.
No questions.
I have a question, um.
Go ahead.
Kathy Braun, so this sign that we're looking at now faces the entrance ramp to go westbound on the merit or southbound on the merit, right?
Yes, I mean, the, this wall right here is probably more parallel to that on ramp, but it's, yeah, it's facing. It's facing as you get onto it, correct?
And is this going to be illuminated at night, the sign or the?
Well, yeah, it's, so that's, yeah, it it, this proposal would be for channel letters. Um, which um is allowed by your regulations now. Um, we're not proposing anything new.
That's allowed with Dark Skies compliant? I don't know how that works, I guess. Um, so you would be putting one sign there and then another one on the entry, this is not the entryway, this is just. A facade that kind of faces out towards the Black.
Right.
The ju, the junction of Black Rock Turnpike and the entrance ramp. And there are some trees between that and the entrance ramp, but I am a little worried that it's not Dark Skies compliant, but. And then you'll have a similar sign facing above, like where people walk into the building, which is directly facing the Hi Ho.
Yeah, well, no, that that entrance, the entrance to that building, uh, to to this building is actually from the parking lot. Um. Which uh, doesn't face the Hi Ho, it faces north.
So you would want two signs, because one, so people could see it from. The entrance way, and another one, so they can see it from Black Rock Turnpike.
From, no, from from the parking lot, where you enter in the parking lot, which is.
Oh, so you would not have one facing the Hi Ho, you would have one facing the the parking lot. You would have only two signs.
Yeah, right here. If you remember, this, there's this large parking area to the north, there would be sign, uh, there. Proposing again hypothetically later application um would be over the door as you go in there.
Can you point where the other sign is on this map, on this plan? The sign we've been talking.
The sign we're talking about is right here on this wall, the 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 larger sign and then the sign that's um. Uh, the sign that would be over the door would be over would be there.
So there would only be two signs.
Correct.
And then just point out Black Rock Turnpike and then the.
You're limited, you're limited, just so you know, up to two signs.
Yeah. Point out Black Rock Turnpike again and the entrance ramp where generally that is. And where's the entrance ramp? Where does that go?
That's that's right here.
Okay, so it doesn't face the merit, it faces the entrance ramp. Where are all the trees you're talking about?
The trees are right here. There's the pocket of trees. There's the, there's the.
Oh, between the entrance ramp and the merit.
The entrance ramp here.
I see.
Trees, then there's the merit and then there's other side of Black Rock.
I see what you're saying.
Other pocket there.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And then you and you're also changing the reg that. Just for the merit that disallows a sign to be able to face the access way. Um, and that's basically so you could do what you're doing here, but this would allow it anywhere on the merit. Right? Um, so the it's weird, though, the Connecticut Turnpike would still not allow a sign. Primarily intended to be visible from the highway, but then you're saying except. For lots which are but the access road uh of the merit. Which are in the D R D D C D.
We're no within within the design commercial district.
Are there other D C Ds on any other? Uh, this would have to be an entryway, right? Um, for to the merit? Or an exit?
So if you look, is this the zoning map?
Yep, we only have exit forty-four, forty-six, forty-seven in our town, right?
Right, so this is uh the Merritt Parkway.
Yeah.
It's purple. This right here is Greenfield Hunt. This this uh brownish color is Greenfield Hunt, so that wouldn't qualify. Um, it's in a D R D. This is the small pocket of the D C D that we're talking about. So that one qual- uh, that's sorry, that's the one that qualifies. This one up here, this is designed residence. I'm sorry, designed research, yeah. That would not qualify.
That's where Sacred Heart is, right? Or where he was?
There's, there's another D R D here that would not qualify.
Is that Park Avenue?
Rest of this, the rest of this is all residential, so it doesn't qualify.
And it would have to be an entry point, right?
No, I mean, the way the reg is written, no. Um, it applies everywhere. We're just accepting out the the small pocket of design commercial district that's there.
And an access road. Um.
Yeah, because that's the way the reg, if you read the first part of the reg, it says Connecticut Turnpike and Merritt Parkway, where a lot abuts the right of way. Or access road. And this.
Oh, right away can mean anywhere along the uh turnpike, right? But right away means anywhere along the turnpike or the merit.
Where abutting the turnpike or its access roads. Yeah, the Merritt Parkway or the turnpike, anywhere it abuts it.
Oh, okay.
So the only thing, this, the the two lots in this D C D are brought into this twenty-nine point eight point two. Because the reg says where to butts the right of way or access road. It's the access road. That brings these properties into that section. That makes sense.
Well, the access road is a right of way.
Back to the hypothetical picture.
The hypothetical.
Yeah.
Just so we're clear, I mean. This building, you see it as you get off. If you're going southbound on the merit, you get off at exit forty-four, you hit the light at Black Rock Turnpike. You're staring right at this.
You're staring, yeah, when you hit the light up Black Rock.
And the sign that's on that angled wall, you would be looking right at that.
Be looking straight at it.
You would only see it coming southbound on the merit. You would not see it coming northbound on the merit, probably.
No, I think unless you, yeah, unless you were like looking back.
Yeah.
Right? Because you gotta imagine you're going here, you you might be able to look back and see it.
And what you're asking is certainly as to that sign that it allowed that it be greater than seventy-two square feet. So certainly as to that one wall. You want the sign to be bigger.
Right.
Now, looking at the other end, the parking lot sign, uh, you contemplate some further signs there on that separate wall. Uh, correct? Would those be also be wall signs? They're basically entrance and.
Yeah, right, right over the entrance, which is classified as a wall sign.
So you do actually.
The and and I think this was the comments that were coming in before. The commission felt more comfortable with that sign would. One side would have to be restricted to seventy-two square feet, but the second sign be this fifteen percent of the area of the wall. We we have no issue with that.
Yes, because my before when I asked, uh, do you need it to one or two walls?
Right.
I was anticipating that this would be the sign and I thought the entrance was there. But what you're asking is really to be able to have one sign like on that angled wall, which would.
A large sign, yeah.
Would be larger and then the other ones, for instance, might be limited to the seventy-two square feet.
Correct. Yeah, we have, we have no issue with making that clarification.
I think it was earlier, I was like, you just want one wall sign and I thought.
Right, right.
Yes, but it's really not.
Well, yeah, I mean, it it's really two, but we only want, we're only requesting for for one sign. Uh, to that fifteen percent. So you wouldn't get to, you know, large signs, three hundred square foot signs.
Yeah, that was important. Thank you.
But but un- un- under the code.
Go ahead.
Under the code, the sign that's parallel to the entry ramp. Um, in the future, you know. No, the next wall.
Oh, this one, yeah.
Wall. The way the code's written would be fifteen percent of that wall.
The way the reg is proposing, yes, but what what I think Commissioner Levy is trying to say, which again, we have no issue with. Is you couldn't say, all right, fifteen percent of this wall and fifteen percent of that wall.
No, but I'm saying in the future, the way the reg is written, that's that wall that's parallel. When Hartford Healthcare gets bought by another company, that has happened, which I've heard people talk about. Um, some other company could come in and put a fifteen percent wall sign. What was the area of that? What what what's the area of that? Side parallel to the entry.
You know, I don't, I don't know. Um, we're not looking at that wall, but.
Thirty-three feet right there, right?
Right here, so yeah, it's a, it's a larger wall. Um.
Feet, Tom's thirty feet high, so that's four fifty, fifteen percent is, we're we're looking like a. Six hundred foot wall, six hundred foot sign permitted under this reg, the way it's written.
It depends on the size. I don't think it's a hundred fifties.
Yeah, and I mean, we, I can, I can look at that because it's being continued over. I can look at that. If you're worried about that, it's it's just limitless.
Limitless.
Less, I got you. Yeah, I can, I can look, we can, we can look at that and see if there's a way to put a cap on it. Ju- just so you, just so you know, if you did that under what Commissioner Levy's saying, though, you would have to take this side down. And you would only have it here then.
Have a six hundred.
But I, but I get what you're saying is, is that it would, it it's, it could be very, very large. So I I, we can look at that maybe.
The reg, the way, the reg, the way it's written right now is imprecise. Uh, your comparisons draw upon examples that are not. Accurate because they look at the Wilbur Cross and not the merit. Uh, you look, look at signs like the Hi Ho as comparison, which are the worst case. Uh, I would request that you assure, first of all, the sign in my mind is. Vegas-like. We've got two names on one building. This looks like. It it's, it's not unified looking, okay? And it's, and they're large. And I'm not sure. If you're looking, I I just don't know why you would need a sign. Most people take GPSs to medical clinics. They're not driving by and. Dropping in. Uh, so I'm not sure what your reasoning for the sign is. Uh, it's got such a limited view. Um, but. Um, I seem to not have consensus here on that, but the way the regulation is written is uncomfortably vague. And imprecise, and I would ask that you make it more precise, not allow. The loophole for when Hartford Healthcare in the end gets purchased, someone reads this and puts. An enormous sign up as of right and we've got a a problem because.
No, I appreciate that. We we could definitely look at.
And I also, I just gotta ask you. Before this commission. Um, citing examples that are not variances, that are not. Um, bad examples and that are not inappropriate. I think it's.
Well, and again, that's just going to, I'm not trying to do that, but what I'm, what I am trying to show with that, because. One of this reg proposals is for in multiple stories, no sign shall be located above the ground floor except on a single tenant building. And I think, you know, Bigelow T, for example, there's, there are a lot of signs. In Fairfield that are on upper stories. On single tenant buildings. And so I I think, uh, or at least and also on buildings where they dominate in a large area of the wall. So I, I don't think it's not in conformity with what we see through town. It's not like every ta- every sign, commercial sign in town is only on the first floor. And I, it, you know, is only on the ground level. I think there's plenty of examples that show um that there are. And so we're consistent, we're consistent with, I mean, if you go down, up and down Black Rock Turnpike, King's Highway. Um, uh, you know, I, there's, there's multiple examples of signs higher than the ground floor.
And this, these regulation amendments are meant to do something different. And your point of showing Hi Ho and all these other signs elsewhere is to show that this is not. So different from what we see in the area.
That's exactly what I'm saying. That's, that's the reason I'm showing those examples.
And I remember when we were going over this, uh, both, God, not just this medical building, but then the eight thirty G.
Right before you and I.
Yeah, I mean, we had a deal, we were dealing with this balance between the conservancy and the project. We went all the way up to. Uh, Hampton as well, I think, looking at different things. So I mean, I'm not, I know it changes, but it's, it's the same highway.
Right, and I'm not sure where.
The ons and offs and the, and the architecture for the bridge, the bridges and stuff. So I mean, that does, that makes sense going that far north.
And I, and again, you know, Norwalk, you know, even if you go south, Norwalk has it, has a huge open area. There's that Merritt View sign that I showed.
Those are cities, you know, we're still a town. Hampton, Norwalk, they're cities, just for clarification. I don't think there, any of these are apples to apples.
Well, I mean. Stratford's a town and the Sikorsky sign. Didn't he turn city?
They turned city.
They're a city. Um, I just had, I just wanted to make a statement and I, um, to Commissioner Randolph, I largely, I, you know, I agree with your statements. And I would say we have full discretion with this text amendment. These are our regulations, just because we have an applicant who wants to change them. We can also design them the the way that we want and we have full discretion over that. So I, you know, if you have changes. You know, I would gladly consider them and and, you know, happy to talk about it when the time's coming for a vote. So I just, you know, just wanna put that on the record. We have absolute full discretion here.
Yeah, that's without a doubt. I mean, any amendments we're gonna have changes to this, we have to be mindful, it has to be. Within the scope or within the footprint, so we, uh, unless we wanna have a second hearing, which we can have. I mean, that's fine. So.
You can always make it more restrictive. You can't expand.
Exactly, so I mean.
That's gonna come up in the next application too.
The commission wishes to do something more expansive. I mean, the applicant will come back potentially with a new application for a new public hearing.
Right, and I do. In respect to, uh, Mr. Randolph, I I do think restrictions are important because what prevents Bob's furniture from. Yeah, coming in, putting up a big.
We already have a cap in ours. I mean, we already have a cap in it. It's, it's lower than they want, so maybe the thought is that. And we can certainly add it or the applicant can suggest something to us.
Right.
And that's gonna be within the footprint of the amendment, so that works. And we'll, something for discussion.
Re- respectfully, Mr. Russo, um, is the seventy-two foot area. Um, does it, I, cause I keep getting it to why you wanna have a larger sign. And with all due respect, cited. Single-story commercial buildings and you said they were above the second floor. Well, they're single-story buildings. This is at the second floor, it's larger, there's no cap. Those three issues, um, I think need to be clarified and restricted.
Yeah, and and I I understand that I referenced, you know, all these is is single story, but what I'm trying to say is. The height of where that sign is, is not something where it's totally out of character with what you see in Fairfield. You do see at a height of whatever that is, twenty feet or wherever that sign is at, you do see signs throughout Fairfield. That that have that height to it.
Alright, I think we've. Done. That's enough of it. Any further comments or questions?
Just one, one, one last specific that, um, Commissioner Braun, um, raised. Um, it, could you, could. Assure that this is dark sky compliant? I know that that's a very, it's a very. Specific requirement that's not currently in our regulations.
It it is, Jim went for the record, that that dark sky compliant is with respect to open. Lights, these are covered. You don't see the the fixture here. There's an opaque covering on it. Um, dark sky compliant for a light on a building or a parking lot light is something that shines downward rather than.
It then upward. If there's no shielding on the back of the light, it's not dark sky compliant to the best of my knowledge. So. Um, it, when you work with your signage.
Yeah, I could talk to them about how that works.
Shielding on the back and it and it glows.
Yeah, I, you know, I'm obviously not saying it, but I, um.
We're gonna come back again, just reach out.
So you know, it's recessed in here, so like you could see, here's the LED. And that, and that's what what your regs currently allow.
Yep.
Alright. Yeah, and if it's with our rights, I mean, hard to go against it now, so. We'll have to do it, worry about, we'd have to consider that another time, but. We'll get clarification on it. Anything further? I'll end the initial presentation portion of this application. Um, as I said, I'll say it, then I'll open up the public comments. Attorney Green, on behalf of the Merritt Parkway Conservancy, has to be present. Not tonight, because I assume he's not still on?
He's not.
Uh, we're kinda hoping that he would jump on remotely, but it sounds like he hasn't. If he jumps on while you're doing the next one, I would suggest we go back. Um, but what I'm gonna do is, so at the very, at the worst, we'll be. I'll be asked for public comments, but we're gonna keep it open for Attorney Green at the next presentation for the finished public comment. Uh, and then rebuttal. But for now, is there any member of the public that wishes to be heard in this application? Or application of Fairfield Medical LLC to amend the sign regulations?
Mr. Twizzler.
There's nobody in the room. Is anybody joining us? Any guys joining us remotely or by phone that wishes to be heard in this application? Is there getting anybody in chat or anything like that?
There's only one, there's only two people who are not identifiable.
Is any member of the public joining us remotely or by phone wish to be heard in this application? Uh, Fairfield Medical LLC zoning regulation amendment with respect to the sign regulations cited. Press star six if you're joining by phone and wanna unmute yourself. Hearing none. I'm going to, public comment will remain open only for Attorney. There's nobody else here. Um, Attorney Green and historic and his client can present a public comment only. Attorney Green, uh, and then we'll turn to rebuttal. I will. Juror, uh, continue this matter to the next, uh.
Next week.
Next week.
One day, I don't, I don't know if everybody received it, if you got it in time. There was a neighbor who lives at Greifel Hunt who did submit a petition in support. I don't know if y'all saw that.
I think we, I think I saw that, um.
Mr. McDonald, I think his name was. Mr. McDonald, yeah, I saw that. Thank you.
I I think we'll, we will accept public comment, you know, uh, emails at the next hearing. It's only Attorney Green. Is that fair?
Yes.
Public comment.
Oh, yeah, yes, yes.
Writing up until, but only Attorney Green next time. Um, so I will, what I say, uh, continue this matter. We are next. Moving next week. Calling next item zoning regulation amendment, application of P Quat Realty LLC to amend section twenty-five point seven point ten. Of the zoning regulations with regard to permitting off-site below market rate units to satisfy the required inclusionary zoning requirement.
Okay. Chair, members of the commission, Chris Russo, um, with Russo Brizio LLC offices, uh, at Ten Seska Hill Road in Fairfield. Here on behalf of the applicant, um. For this amendment, um, which. We've been working on for some time. Okay, uh, I. I think in order to save time, because you all are putting in a lot of, uh, hours, I could. Probably skip the reasoning for what, what, how this reg, the genesis of where this was coming from. Um, if anybody want.
Hear you, if you don't mind, just, it's been a while. We've had a lot of applications.
Oh, sure, okay, yeah, no problem. Um, so. This originally, I came in and submitted, uh, uh, for a fee in lieu of, um, affordable dwelling units. Uh, as you know, your regulations require ten percent, uh, for units to be designated below market rate. Um, if, uh, if you have, if you have ten units or over, um, in your, um, development. Um, there, this amendment. Is directed solely towards for sale below market rate units. It does not apply to. It does not apply to rentals. Um, and there's a number of concerns. I've met with the Affordable Housing Committee a number of times on this. I've met with Mark, uh, Barnhart on this. And, um, you know. For sale affordable units, I think are, um. Different than for, uh, rental when it comes to below market rate unit owners because. With rental units. Your costs. Almost all your costs are controlled. It's built into the rent. Um, you, the utilities are factored into the formula, um, for the affordable formula. Um, your rent price is set. You know you get housing and you're gonna be able to basically afford the utilities. It's all laid out there in the affordability, uh, of the affordable plan formula. Um, and there are some things that are extras in certain apartment complexes. Like parking can be an extra, storage can be an extra, but essentially you know, this is what I'm going to pay, um, towards the rental of my unit. Um, and this portion is cut off or is carved out for utilities. Um, so, so that's rentals. For sale units are different because there are. There are elements that could come in that are not controlled by the eight thirty G regulation. Um, or the, the, the state regulation with regard to affordable units. Um, the big being, if there was a development that was a for-sale development, there likely would be an HOA. And there are common charges associated with that, um, and there's just other incidental charges that. Um, that come with being a unit owner, um, that someone might not, you know, be able to anticipate. Um, you don't know what situations arise towards the maintenance of that building. Um, and, uh, that could prove a challenge to, to some unit owners. Uh, on the flip side, if you are a unit owner and you go to sell. Um, your unit, it, the price you sell it for is controlled. So you may happen to have some money that you put in towards your house, or maybe you just, you know. Put in your manual labor and bettering your unit. Um, and therefore increasing the value of your unit. But you will not be able to receive the benefit of that because when you sell it. Um, the price is controlled, whereas if somebody owns a market rate unit, they could obviously, uh. They can obviously, you know, increase the price that they sell it for and collect on that. They are not similarly restricted. So, uh, a lot of towns have adapted, uh, adopted regulations that have either. Um, allowed for a fee in lieu of those units, where you pay into some type of affordable, uh, housing trust fund. Um, and others have, uh, adopted regulations that allow for something like this, a units in lieu. There's some, Stanford actually allows a combination. You can do both the unit and the fee. Um, uh, in lieu of the affordable units in your, um, uh, your development. Having gone through the, the fee in lieu. One of the big concerns with the fee in lieu was. The town would not get the unit right away. If. Let's say somebody had two units in their development that were below market rate. And they paid a fee of, let's say, six hundred thousand dollars, gave it to the town. The restriction would come off those units and the town would then have to take the six hundred thousand dollars and create the two units. And that could happen in a year, it could happen in three years, it could happen maybe never. And so the town would be increasing its housing stock, but not necessarily guaranteeing. Um, that they would ever get those below market rate units. The unit in lieu, and I'll read through the regulation, is different because you, before. The first unit of that development sells, the u, the unit that's in lieu. Has to be restricted. So there's never a time, there's never a delay in the town receiving the below market rate unit. Frankly, it's possible that you could get it before even the, the, the other one. So it, it eliminates that, that issue, uh, I believe. Um. So. Getting into, to the reg and, and what it proposes and, um. A lot of the language actually is, is somewhat stolen from your fee in lieu of open space, a lot of the wording, some of the phrases. Um, Commissioner Harrison, I know, um. You had commented on the term sole discretion, which you'll see right off the bat. That's, that's because it's from the, the, the fee in lieu of open space reg. That you have. I, I, I just copied it over essentially. Um, so reading through the regulation, um, what it's proposing is, uh, twenty-five point seven point ten. It's an entirely new section and it says designation. Of, um, of off-site BMR dwelling units. Um, and before I get into it, uh, cause this just came up in the last application. Chair, when I was here last time, you had given the advice of. Leave it wider of a net.
Yes.
And then the commission can tighten the belt, tighten the screws on it. Um, we can't go the other way. So if you, when you're reading through this, um, if you see language and you're like, well, that's vague. That was done on purpose to, to allow the commission to kinda where the commission felt necessary to tighten the screws. Okay, so. It starts, the commission at its sole discretion may allow an applicant to designate below market rate dwelling units off-site. In lieu of required below market dwelling units onsite offered for sale only. As set forth in section twenty-five point seven point nine herein above. So. If you have a ten-unit development, the regs require you, um. To provide one BMR unit. You have this option to designate one unit off-site in lieu of the one that you have in your development. Um, but what it says specifically here is it's offered for sale only. It does not. Include, uh, for rental properties such as the Anchorage for, for instance. The Anchorage could not avail itself of this regulation. Um. The designation of off-site BMR dwelling units shall only be available in lieu of, of units intended for sale, just restating that. However, the commission shall have the sole discretion, discretion to permit the off-site BMR dwelling units to be offered for sale. And or, or rental. So while. It's only within the development, it's a for-sale development. The commission would have the ability for the off-site unit to decide. This is gonna be for sale, this is gonna be for rent. Um, that provides a benefit. I'm gonna go through what I, I think the benefits to the town come from this reg. But one of those that I know is that, uh, rentals give you more, uh, points, uh, HUE points. Um, so the commission would have the option that they, that you say it's rental and then the town gains more, uh, points for that unit. Um. The off-site BMR dwelling units shall be of similar or greater size as the onsite dwelling units. You know, just so somebody couldn't get away with, I have a three-bedroom unit in my development. I'm offering you a one-bedroom, five hundred square foot. Unit. Now, I did, this is one of the ones I left vague to let the commissions tweak how, how they felt appropriate. Um, the, the commission shall have the sole discretion, it's the adequacy of the size and location of the off-site BMR dwelling units. Again, location, this was something I talked with the Affordable Housing Committee about too. You know, if there's some type of location restriction, maybe that ends up restricting you more than you want. Um, you know, we don't, we don't know what, what examples are gonna come up in the, uh, in the future. An applicant may request to designate off-site BMR units and such designation may be approved by the commission. If and when the commission determines in its sole discretion that there are circumstances where the designation would be desirable. And in the public interest and in the interest of the BMR unit owners. Again, kinda go into that discussion that I had at the beginning about the challenges that for-sale units can have for BMR unit owners. The next paragraph, the commission may also approve for the off-site BMR dwelling units to be conveyed to the town of Fairfield. A town-related entity, i.e. the Fairfield Housing Authority, or a nonprofit housing provider. Um, this would include groups that the town has recently been working with. Um, Operation Hope, uh, and Habitat for Humanity, who have, um, been developing some BMR units. Um, for their administration or potential ownership of the BMR dwelling unit. I think providing a number of places where this unit could, whether it's the town or Housing Authority. And Habitat is appropriate because we, we don't know what the capacity of each of these organizations may be at the time. Or if it's something that they would be interested in taking. So the Housing Authority, maybe it's at capacity, or maybe they don't want to oversee it to family dwelling. So then we could turn to Operation Hope or Habitat and say, you know, how about, you know, do you have the capacity to take this on? So we, we kinda opened that up there, um, for that possibility. Uh, in said scenario, the town of Fairfield, the town-related entity or nonprofit housing provider would have an option to further restrict the affordability requirements. Of the off-site BMR dwelling unit, i.e. restrict the unit to persons who in, is in, whose income is less than or equal to sixty percent. Rather than eighty percent of state or Mary, uh, state or area median income. Right now, your regulations, BMR units are eighty percent of area median income. If it's going to be conveyed to. Uh, Housing Authority or Habitat for, for Humanity, that could present an opportunity. To restrict it down to sixty percent of AMI. You could frankly do even further. There's forty percent, you know, lower than that. The benefit for the town on that is that also gives you more points. Um, so that's an option as well. Um, next paragraph, in the event such designation of an off-site BMR dwelling unit is accepted by the commission. The restriction on the designated off-site BMR dwelling unit shall be recorded on the land records of the town of Fairfield. Prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy for the first dwelling unit for the onsite project. The development can't get a CO on its first unit. Until the town gets the restriction and therefore has a BMR. Uh, unit like they were supposed to in the original development. There is no gap in time. There's no lag in time for the town to receive it. You're not gonna get your CO until you do that. Um, otherwise, you're gonna have to designate the units onsite for, for as restricted. Uh, if the designation of an off-site BMR dwelling unit is in lieu of an existing onsite BMR dwelling unit. The restriction on the designated off-site BMR dwelling unit shall be recorded on land records of the town of Fairfield simultaneously. With the release of the restriction on the existing onsite BMR dwelling. So same thing, if, um. You know, Ten Sasco Hill Roads, an existing ten-unit development, it's got one affordable unit. That restriction is not getting released until the off-site one is restricted. Again, so there's no point of time where. The town dips in the number of BMR units it has. It happens simultaneously. Um, and, um, so that's the reg. Um, again, there's some language in it that was left broader, um, for discussion and, and if the commission wished to restrict it further. Um. It's only a tool, um. It's a tool you can use, it's a tool you don't have to use. It's at the commission's sole discretion. I repeat the phrase sole discretion like fifty times in here, just to make it clear, um, that, uh, it's up to you. Um, the benefits, I've said some of them, but. The benefits I see with this for the town is. In the original, let's say it's one affordable unit that, that the development has. You get one BMR unit and that's delivered when that property gets a CO. With the unit in lieu. You get the one affordable unit at the same time, if not before, if for some reason the developer restricted it before. Never after. So it does not have the lag of the fee in lieu as I discussed. The commission would have the ability to lower the percentage of AMI. So to take it down from eighty to sixty to forty and get more points. The town could say it's in perpetuity, the restriction. Um, the commission could switch it to rental, as I said before, which gives it more points, gives the town more points. And then on top of it, if it is a situation where the developer is able to transfer it. To. The town. Um, or some entity, there's either gonna be sale income when they sell that unit, which will still be restricted. Um. Or on the rental. And so essentially, in a roundabout way, it acts as a fee in lieu. Because if, it, you know, if that option is, if, if an applicant comes and presents that to you, that I'm gonna convey this unit to. The Fairfield Housing Authority, it's essentially a fee in lieu because they're get, they're either gonna get rental or they're gonna get sale income on it. Um, and you'll end up getting both out of it, which could generate more units. So there's a lot of added benefits. With the unit in lieu, which again, this commission, um, has discretion on. Um.
Quick question.
Sure.
I don't know if it's quick, but Commissioner Harrison, then leave it.
Yeah, and, and thank you, Attorney Russo. I know you have worked on this for a while. And I, and I appreciate your diligence on this and, and very well thought of. Uh, I, and my big concern is. So the eastern part of Fairfield has a large concentration of eight thirty G developments for the obvious reasons. It's economically sound to, to do it there. And my concern is this will just exacerbate that further. Um, so how can you help me here? Because I, I just don't wanna keep adding to that. I mean, I, I don't think eight thirty G, in my view. Was intended to have one area of town concentrated with, with affordable housing. I think it was meant to be dispersed around the entire community.
Right, and, and I think. One, again, that goes back to, it's in your discretion and there is language. It's purposely vague in here for the points of discussion, but, um. That say you have, say over the location, so if you feel like somebody just put it, you know. On the complete other side of town, an area where you have, where you already have affordable units. Well, that is not, you'd rather have the affordable units in the current location. And so you don't have to, you don't have to accept it. Or, you know, maybe somebody comes and it's. Not on the other side of town, but it is in an area where it, where there is a lack of BMR units. You say, alright, you know. Um. That, that's a good location for it and then you, you approve it. I, I had played with and had talked to, you know, staff and talked to, to Mark about it and, and the Affordable Housing Committee. You. The, the distance. Like restrictions could get a little clunky. And what the Affordable Housing Committee, when we were kinda talking it out was, alright. Let's say you say it's gotta be within fifteen hundred feet of the site or something like that. You know, when something comes along and the commission looks at it and say, oh, I really like this, I'll bet it's two thousand, you know, two thousand feet away. And in this, and, and in kind of that same example, let's say. The development was in Greenfield Hill. And. The, the person found units that were in the beach area or were in Southport. Where there was a lack of BMR units, or at least the, the commission felt there was a lack of BMR units. You know, whoa, why stop the commission from having that discretion that they could be like, no, no, that's, that's a good location for them and, and, and we'll take it. So, um.
I guess my concern is, like, I, I feel like there, you know, some areas of town are tighter with housing than others. That's the reality of it. I mean, Greenfield Hill. You know, it, it's, it's much different there than the Stratfield area, which is more Dunn's or McKinley area. Um, so I guess. I, I guess I feel like we're being put in a position that we, where we would have to wait for the right unit to come on board.
And that's entirely possible. Yeah, you might, you might not be satisfied, I mean, somebody.
And that's putting a lot on the commission. In order to get what you want, and I just, I'm not sure if I'm comfortable with that.
Well, I think it gives the commission flexibility and you could choose to use the tool or you could choose not to. You could say. No.
I'm not sure if I see as a tool though. I mean, a tool is a positive thing. I'm not sure if I see this as a net positive for the town.
Well, and, and again, I, I can't say what, what you may seem is positive, but the. You know, I, I could see the commission saying, well, again, you're proposing units. In a location where we need BMR units. So because of that, we are, um, comfortable with that. Or, you know, again, you're getting all these ben, you know, maybe this presents an opportunity to get all these benefits where. We're gonna be able to lower the percentage of AMI. So right now, uh, you know, and I'm not saying this is the case. But let's say a situation where the town was looking for units that were sixty percent AMI. And there was a real need for sixty percent AMI units and, um, this. This option would, would allow you to be able to say, okay, yeah, now we can create sixty percent AMI units. Or I mean even forty percent AMI units um, and address a need. Um, if you didn't have the need, then maybe you just, you wouldn't exercise it, but. But it, it has some added benefits to it.
Commissioner Levy?
Yes, um. What I like about it is that we have the discretion. So I'm not worried about uh. Developers or anybody uh, trying to use this as a loophole because it's totally subject to our discretion. Uh, and I don't think this commission is going to uh, put houses over on the east end of town. If we can find a way to diversify uh, or, you know, extend uh, where affordable housing is. Uh, hypothetically speaking, if the Anchorage were a for-sale development. I mean, those units, if you were to put it up today, would probably be worth at least a million five, which is that fair?
Maybe. I mean, they're, they're, they're going to be a decent price. Yes, yeah.
So I mean, if, if there were, I don't know, how many units were in there, like three?
Yeah, there's ninety. So how many? Nine, so there's nine units B, BMR.
Right. So you'd be talking about nine, let's say a million dollars each, nine million dollars to be uh. Applied to find nine affordable houses. Uh, I mean, it could be nine units right at Mosswood. Uh, for instance, which I'm sure you could get for nine million dollars, uh, which would be nice. What I would like to see perhaps added to this, because what's not in here, we've got similar size, you know, quality uh. Let's see, uh, the adequacy of the size and location uh, is in there. But I would like to see something um, where. Or we could get units of similar, or include value. In which might open the option of, or let me see if I can say this. That uh, or the commission would have the discretion to apply the value of the. Below market rate unit uh, to the acquisition of one or more affordable units. So for instance, let's say you've got a unit that's worth a million five. We may not be able to find a million five there, but we might find two seven hundred and fifty thousand houses, which are um, you know. In Greenfield Hill even, or Stratfield or the beach area, there's, there's a few left there. Uh, to give us a discretion to, to accept a value. Uh, to be used to purchase more than one, one for one exchange. So that might be two units.
Yeah, and I, I think, and I'll look at see if um.
Isn't that a fee in lieu?
Basically.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's.
Excepted, it'll be spent, it doesn't go into some fund to disappear.
Okay, that's fine.
The difference is before you get a CO, we get two units.
Right, and there's some, you know, and again, there's some developments where. Like the Anchorage example that you're, you're, you're citing, you know. They could afford to just convey the units to the town. Right, that they're able to go acquire the units for based on how much they're going to be able to, to sell their Anchorage unit for. They can go and get that unit and then convey it to you, uh, to the town, I should say. Um, and. So then the town's getting that unit for free and then the town's turning it either, you know, into rental income or sale income. So they might have the, the. The value in the difference that they could afford to do something, whereas maybe there's developments. That um, that just wouldn't be able to, to withstand that uh, you know, difference. Um, it, the prices are not that different. It's not, you know, maybe as high-end as the Anchorage is.
I mean, if that were a sale units, they might say, well, rather than now we're having to administer this uh. And deal with all the problems, uh, you know, or dealing with the issue of whether or not people can afford. A twenty thousand dollar assessment for a new roof or swimming pool. Uh, the Anchorage could have equally said, we're taking nine units. And rather than selling them directly, we're just giving them to the town, you deal with it. Right, I think we could probably do that in here.
Yeah, and, and, and again, essentially what this amendment is do, is doing is, is allowing. A developer to go find that, whatever that, that option is and coming in to presenting it to you. Maybe they find a two-family and they say, you know, here, look, I found a two-family, it's in uh, Southport, it's in the beach area, it's near downtown. And um, uh, you know, I have one BMR unit. And, and I'll, you know, offer the town this, this two, this two-family dwelling. Um, you know, and, and, and basically make a proposal. This just allows them to come to you. And then the commission just says, yes, no.
But that would require that we add.
We add, yeah, and I'll, I'll, I'll look at that.
What about, I have a question, uh, just about the time period, like, how long do we have? What if it take, I mean, I'm, I'm just thinking that this could be a very open-ended thing, because real estate markets are very. You know, they fluctuate, they change. I'm just thinking like, what can we, I mean, I, I would like to think about some kind of time period in here.
The time period is, they need to come to us with the application and identify units at the time of the application, I think.
Right. So, yo.
No, I know, it's not as if we approve it and then they have a year.
No, thank you for clarifying that. I guess my issue is sometimes it takes, you know, four weeks. From the start of a public hearing to the end, right? To, you know, to, I don't know, I feel like we can, it, it could be hard for the applicant, I guess is what I'm saying. Could be very challenging. I'm not saying no, I'm just saying it could be challenging.
No, go ahead, Mr. White. I have something.
That, that's a good point and, and you may not be able to identify the precise unit at the time the application is made. But if they're coming back after an application's been approved to say, okay, now that we know we have an approval. These are the unit or units we're offering to be the below-market rate units in lieu. Uh, and if it doesn't happen, and if the time, the, the ultimate timeframe is, is this is crafted, they don't get a CO on their development project. Until they can provide those units. So it may not likely occur at the time of the application, but it would be probably. After the application's been approved and then uh, between the approval and the actual construction of the. Project would be when specific units would be presented to you to see if you think that they would be adequate to serve this proposal.
We may need language in there that kind of outlines, either it's provided at the time of the application. Or should an approved project occur, uh, should an approval occur? And the opportunity arises that they have to come back to us for a specific application, because we would obviously need to approve it.
I think I, I, I would argue that that's here because it requires that the unit be accepted by you. Before the CO is issued for the first unit in the new development. So. If, if they are, if a developer is looking to provide off-site units and they don't have them by the time. They're ready to occupy their building, they're either going to then have to supply those units in the actual development. Or not occupy it until they could provide those units.
Yeah, but the point is that we want them to come back, so we have the discretion of review with the units.
Yes, yes, you, you have that discretion no matter when the unit is.
I mean, that's the, the thought of it. I, I guess either way, I guess it kind of makes sense. Um. What was I going to say? Uh, go ahead, Commissioner Randolph.
So I think there's two. Um, areas that would really benefit from clarification. One, Commissioner Levy was talking about the value. So I think the. What's not addressed right now is the equivalency. So you build a um. Uh, you know, development in Southport and the developer comes back with a, with a, a. Um, sorry, the, what's, what's the acronym?
Below market rate unit?
BMR, a BMR in a part of town that's not equivalent. Uh, so specifying some type of financial equivalency would eliminate that clarification, which is what. Um, Commissioner Levy was specifying, because what is also a problem is that. It's our sole discretion. Now, it's developer. Um, that is, creates a lot of risk to the developer, because. A COO could be held up at the commission's sole discretion, not sole, but reasonable discretion. And that could be a barrier to implementing this. We want more affordable housing. And so I think a clearer path would be to specify a value. Um, and if that value is not obtainable through the substitution of a unit, then the default is that. That money goes into, a cash contribution is made someplace.
No, I mean, I think that, I, I know, first off, this is not a fee in lieu, so that going into a cash fund is kind of. Against where we given the advice earlier and against what this is. But I think the sole discretion aspect, I'm not sure I agree with you on that, because it's either, we're not going to hold anything up. Either we approve it with uh, granting this a fee, uh, this unit in lieu of, so they're identified. Or we don't and we grant it and the BMRs are in the project. And either they go forward with that approval with the BMRs in the project, they get their CO and they're off. Or we approve it with off-site BMRs and they go forward and they do what they need to do. Or we approve it with BMRs in the project and then they come back to us with. BMRs outside of the project that we either agree or don't agree with.
There, there's, there's a lot of ambiguity and permutations with that, that. Might be a barrier to completing a project. I think if we had a clear set of guidelines.
I, I think I, the framework I understand is he says, I'm not sure I agree with that as far as a barrier to complete the project.
Well, so here, here's the concern.
Three things I just outlined.
Right, so if the, the MR units are assumed as a default in the design of the project. And we, we know that the BMR units are equivalent, but they're not an exact match. Then the developer would have to do his pro forma based upon a BMR in the unit. But he would have, he would have the option to then pull those BMRs out and then upgrade the units. I mean, there's a lot of. Ambiguity in implementing a project like this as it's written, because you don't have certainty of whether you're going to have a BMR. Outside the building or inside the building. And then if you have it outside, it's up to the whims of the commission. Because it's not reasonable discretion, it's sole discretion for us to reject it. Now, we're a reasonable bunch here, but you don't know who's going to be here in two years, right? So, so it, it is a developer, there's a lot of ambiguity in that, and I don't even know if you could get that. That ambiguity would be difficult to get underwritten with a lender.
Yeah, I mean. If I was a developer, you know, I, I'm given BMR units in my development. That is, that's not off the table, right? I mean, I'm, if I'm going to do a development, I am moving forward with the project knowing that. I have to provide whatever ten percent of the unit count is, is BMR unit owners. What this does is allow, and I, I, and I'm sorry, Commissioner, I'm not understanding right. I, I think it's an added tool. Either they find something and maybe it works out that they could propose to you those units in lieu, but I, I, if I was a developer. I wouldn't proceed with the project unless I knew I could make the project work with providing the units in my development. And maybe I am able to find another solution with this units off-site. But it's, you know, it's nothing guaranteed to the developer. It's their, their risk and, and, and that's it. I, I mean, I don't know if that, is that answering quite?
If, if that's, if that's the situation, it would address it. So es- essentially the scenario you're, you're referring is that this project would. Design and underwritten with the BMRs onsite. And then this is essentially provides an option for the developer to pull those out and seek a substitute. Is that, is that the intent?
Yeah, and, and that's the intent. I mean, the only other situation I can see is maybe what, what, what Chairman Noonan's saying is, you know. If I already had a two-family dwelling or something like that and I came in and I said, look, you know, I'm presenting a twenty-unit project. I have two units of uh, affordable that I'm required and I already have this site selected. Then, then maybe they just come to you together with all that in place. But I, I, the more. Common way I think it's going to come in is, is that somebody comes to you, presents a twenty-unit development, with two units onsite. And then gets approved and then afterwards comes to you and says, hey, there's a two-family that came available in Southport. I could locate the BMR units off-site. What do you think about, you know, what do you think about that? I, I think that's how it's going to. To come about mostly.
Commissioner Levy?
Yeah, I think just to make that clear, uh, really what this applies to is uh, that period of time. After the approval of the application and before a CO is issued. And that's probably a year and during that period of time, if you find, you know, places, I mean. The likelihood of somebody coming before us uh, and having, unless they already own it. Uh, a suitable substitute off-site unit, uh, that's slim to none. Uh, that's not going to happen. So it's a practical matter. This really should be that after the application is granted, a developer may. Apply to us to substitute off-site units in lieu of the ones at the project. You know, doesn't that basically?
Yeah, and I, I would consider it would be a separate applicant. It would just, it would have to be a separate.
I think, I think that's implied. I don't think you need to say that because it says that. The commission may allow an applicant to designate below-market units in lieu of off-site units. The timing of when that occurs. Is not particularly relevant to that option.
Oh, it's basically there.
Right, well, I think so. We're, we're struggling with it a little bit. So perhaps a clarification would be helpful if, if there's a consensus that it's clear now. Um, but I think that's, I, I think what you're saying is, I mean, you, you've addressed my question. But I think the clarification would help, would be helpful.
I'm good, Commissioner.
Commissioner Braun, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm still, I'm, I, I kind of was agreeing with um, what Commissioner Randolph was saying that. But now he doesn't, he's not saying that anymore. How, how is it fair if you have million-dollar for sale? And one or two should be affordable to then go find a duplex on the other, you know, on the Bridgeport line? Shouldn't the developer have to put money in to make up the difference with the value? Because he's getting a benefit by not having. To do that, right? Is that what you were saying before? Yeah.
It's.
Wouldn't that incentivize everyone? Yeah, we're going to sell million-dollar condos and uh, because we have to do too affordable, we'll just build a duplex. We'll find some old duplex over down there, you know?
Well, again, yeah, I mean.
In our sole discretion.
Yeah, it's in your sole discretion. So if somebody comes in and it's clear what they're doing, you know, you're going to be like, no. And then that's the end of the conversation. And so, um, you, you have your sole discretion. And again, I think there are. Opportunities there where certain developments. May be able to afford and say, on, on what I'm proposing to you, I am going to transfer for free. This unit to the town of Fairfield and. You know, that's four hundred thousand, six hundred thousand, eight hundred thousand. It's tough, it's tough for a, the value part of I'm trying to understand, because I mean, you don't know. You, I mean, you, you don't know the, how much those units are actually worth, you know, is it?
Here's the key.
Very market dependent.
Here's the key too. This is only for for-sale ownership market rate, rates, uh, ski units.
For sale market.
This is not for rentals.
Correct.
I think we've been pretty clear. We want rental, rentals are kind of off the table. We want the units because they're rentals. This needs to be, we need to be mindful of that this is only for ownership and for-sale units, which are slim in our town to begin with. The last one I can think of is obviously Pequod. Before that, I can't even think of the last time.
Yeah, well, Westway Road kind of stands.
Westway, yeah, that's the only one. Yeah, you're right. I mean, they, they present.
Oddly enough, the only two are in Southport.
Or in Southport. I mean, they present their own host of challenges with the HOA being the predominant one. So. You know, we just have to be mindful that this is a tool that actually only comes up very fre- infrequently. I mean, your point's well taken about the value, but yours as well, because the value is limited based on what the. The BMR rate unit's going to be. It's not like it's a million-dollar condo, because the condo next, market rate condos next to us is a million dollars. It's probably two hundred, three hundred thousand? I mean, I'm trying to think of Westway off the top of my head.
Uh, yeah, I think it's.
Million two, but the market rate units was like two fifty or something like that.
The, the, what, what the BMR, what they were sold for. Yeah, I don't, I don't know what the latest.
Okay, and I don't, I'm not going to hold it to you. So I mean, the values, the value is probably good to put in there as a factor for us. But it's the key, I mean, you say sole discretion, I mean, we're going to be reasonable because we're going to have to identify why we're saying no. I think, and it's going to be location, it's going to be type, character, potentially value. Um. So I mean, I did, just to throw that out there.
But, but back to Commissioner Braun's question, um, you did answer it because we have, it's our sole discretion. We don't even have to be reasonable.
And that, and that's, that's why some of the terms are vague. I mean.
So, so I think, I think that gives us enough um, discretion.
Right.
To accept or reject the suggested alternative. So I, I'm comfortable with that, so.
Because you're, you know, and I remember you're.
Follow-ups, what?
Well, so we don't care then if it's an equivalent value. We just wanted equivalent size.
Well, we could. I mean, it's, it's our discretion. I mean.
But why wouldn't we want to put money in the bank? I, I guess it comes back to the original problem, um, but other towns do. I I guess it comes back to the original problem, um, but other towns do it. I mean, it is hard to figure out.
We had the feeling, we had the feeling the application that we voted down, however many months.
Right.
So I mean, I don't remember whose voting was what, but, you know, that's, let's not tread old ground and reopen old wounds for you, I guess.
Well, it was because the calculation was too small, and we were comparing it to other towns.
Well, it's tough. It runs into this value problem we're having, where it's like, what is the number we should? The, that's the clunky part of the fee in lieu. It's like, where is the number supposed to be? Is it three hundred thousand? Is it three hundred fifty? Is it four hundred? I mean, and and so it's clunky in that way. I think the, the units in lieu to me is a safe place for the commission to dip its toe into this, because again, you are guaranteed the unit. There's no lag time there. You're getting the unit. And what I think is, my prediction is this amendment would breed its own success, right? If if so, if somebody comes along and says, I'm offering you two units in downtown Fairfield or Southport, and and I'm gonna transfer it to the Fairfield Housing Authority for free. You can lower the percentage A M I down to sixty percent, and you can switch it to rental, and then you collect the income of it, and it gets transferred to Habitat for Humanity. And Habitat for Humanity says, well, I, you know, we just sold those units. Now we got all this, this money from the sale. We're gonna create two more units, and then you realize, well, we accepted those units in lieu, and it gave us four affordable units basically out of it, and we got a lot more H U E uh, points out of it. Well, then you're gonna be more inclined to to go for the tool the next time, use that tool the next time it comes in.
If, I wonder if we shouldn't be more specific and just say, and I'm not sure, I say this, I'm not sure how maybe proper this really is, is that they are required to transfer it to the town or to.
I I have a comment on that.
Yeah, okay, I'm I'm saying it, it doesn't sound right.
No, I, that's an option. It's it's an option here.
Okay.
But from the developer's standpoint, uh, conveyance to the town is not gonna be nimble enough to address the concerns that uh, Alexis or Commissioner Harrison brought up in terms of the timing of a real estate deal.
Okay.
Uh, to 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 convey it to the town would require you guys to make a recommendation, the Board of Finance, the R T M, and the Board of Selectmen, and by the time that happens, that deal could be gone. So what I think the developer here is looking for, the applicant slash developer, is hey, if I have a nonprofit entity already queued up, that hey, if I've got Operation Hope, or if I've got the Housing Authority, or if I've got Habitat, and I want, and and they're willing to take the unit, I don't need to go through those steps to convey it. I could just convey it. Um, but going back to, if you add in the sentence in the first paragraph, where the commission shall have the whole discretion as to the adequacy of the size, location of the B M R. If you add and value to that, which is what I'm understanding, you wanna have some, not necessarily defining it, but considering it.
Just a factor.
That would give the flexibility to, for example, if the value is off, if it, it may not be a one for one. If it's, hey, if I need to provide you one unit uh, in the, in the development, I'm gonna provide a duplex. So maybe it's a two for one, because the value consideration, if you're, you know, that is more equalized. Uh, and then that gives you more discretion. So you may end up getting more affordable units than you otherwise would. Uh, and then the conveyance to some entity other than the town is gonna speed up the ability to to make that conveyance. But again, I think the advantage there is that entity, if it's a not-for-profit entity like the Housing Authority, that's gonna be an impermeability unit. It's not gonna expire in forty years. So there's an advantage to not having it necessarily. And now, that doesn't mean that it's never gonna work for a town of Fairfield property, so it's there as an option, but I think it's the less likely option.
Commissioner Harrison?
I just, I guess, just a quick observation, I guess. My concern is, do, would a town like Fairfield want to take that on? I mean, it's, these are very uncertain times with with budgets and, you know.
No.
Funding in general.
In in response to that, probably not. I would say the town of Fairfield is likely the least, probably the least likely of the end owners. Uh, but if if a developer finds, hey, if if the Housing Authority is interested in taking that on, or if Habitat or some other not-for-profit entity can, that takes the town out, and they don't have to jump through all those hoops, and that that uh, that not-for-profit entity can control it as they see fit at a much lesser um, income level.
Yeah, thank you.
Right. I mean, yeah, and if if, the the good news is, it's against the land record. So if Habitat for Humanity can no longer handle it, and they have to transfer it to whoever, it doesn't matter. It's, the restriction stays with it.
Okay.
Do do we require perpetual uh, a below market? I I don't remember what our regulations say. Do we require them perpetual or just forty years now?
It's the, the inclusionary provision is a forty year provision.
So this, we don't have a timeframe for the deed restriction.
It would be a minimum as provided in the inclusionary zoning piece, but it could theoretically be in perpetuity if it's conveyed out.
Although we would designate that when we make our decision, right?
Well, yeah, the deed restriction would be a minimum of forty years, but if it's skip, but if, say, for example, the Housing Authority
Oh, okay, right, right.
It it conveyed to the Housing Authority, you know, they're gonna wanna, they're they're, they're gonna wanna keep it for longer than forty years.
Okay.
It's just a, it just gives you a more, a a, a more menu of options.
Commissioner Levy?
Well, I guess theoretically, a uh, an applicant, an individual could come in and buy that unit, and it would be subject to the forty years, and there's nothing to preclude that.
Right.
Yeah.
Right, that would satisfy the requirement, but the possibility exists that that could.
Yeah, it could be made in perpetuity, for taking, yeah, if if the.
Okay.
I I I think the addition of value is a good clarification, because it, I think one of the scenarios would be buying a, an existing building and renovating it, a three-decker. So I, that seems the most likely, one of the more likely scenarios, so I think that's a good.
Yeah, I mean, add a value and maybe value and other pertinent factors.
Yeah, and uh, yeah, relevant, yep. Yeah, something like that, I got you.
Just in case something's coming up we can't think of, that will be the catchall. All right, gotta have the catchall.
Gotta have the catchall.
And make it any broader than it is.
Yeah, absolutely, so, I mean, one more. Commissioner Harrison?
I was just, I just wanted to thank Mr. Rusev for for the good conversation tonight. Um, you've been up twice. But I I I really, I do appreciate it, and I appreciate everybody's insights here, so thank you.
Thank you. I always appreciate the comments, because you do, I mean, I'm not a good writer to begin with, and so to have, to have other people look at something and say, you missed something here. I mean, it always helps to get more eyes on things, and so I I appreciate it, and the Affordable Housing Committee as well, because they've seen this uh, a lot of times as well.
Is there any risk that you could get through, we would approve your project, require the ten percent, and then you can't find something in the next, before your C O? What would happen then? You you would just not get the C O?
You have to provide a unit in your development, or you don't get a C O. I mean, you know, this isn't something that's like owed to the developer, right? I mean, it's not like, I mean, if they're able to avail themselves of it, they're able to avail themselves of it and ask it. But I mean, you know, that's why I say, if I were a developer, I would proceed like I'm building those units in my development. But should a two, you know, all of a sudden, three months after I get approved, uh, two families come up, and it's in a location that seems like it's appropriate, well, then I might, you know, come to the commission and say, hey, you know, I have this option.
It's a privilege.
Very interesting, very creative.
It's a strange way to put it.
Yeah, I mean, well.
Yeah, but, no, I was agreeing with you.
Yeah, okay.
Your interpretation.
Final comments or questions?
Nope.
I'll end the initial presentation portion of this application. There's nobody in the room, but I'll open up the public comments. Uh, does any member of the public wish to be heard on this zoning regulation amendment? P C O R Realty LLC pertaining to offsite B M R units, low rate market units. Everybody in the room, is there anybody online? Anybody online or joining by phone, wish to be heard in this application, please press star six to unmute yourself if you're joining by phone. Any member of the public wish to be heard in this application? Very non-public comment disclosed, nothing further.
So we're gonna, so we're gonna continue it to allow for the inclusion language, is that the?
I think we, yeah, I mean, I think.
Or or just the?
I don't think so. I mean, I know.
Including an application on the same night?
Yeah, I I, yeah, you wouldn't that be nice?
Within the footprint.
I, if, you know what, if it's not within the, it's right on the line of the footprint. You know, it's just the factors that we're considering, identifying them, and sole discretion is throughout, so I mean, I think it's just outlining. I don't think we need to have, I think we can.
More specific.
Yeah, I think we don't need to have us reopen it for what the additions we made. Now, obviously, when we come to our executive session, should that change, then so be it. But I think as we are with what is said, with the the minimum, the the two things that I think I outlined that were from other people, I think that's enough to go to the executive session on. Right, Mr. Wentz?
I I I don't think the change, you're talking about adding uh, adding the word value and other relevant considerations. I don't think.
No, I don't.
Really changes the proposal.
I don't either. It doesn't make.
It's not, it's not substantive, it's de minimis, more or less, yeah.
I'm not gonna add anything helpful. We can close it.
So I will close the hearing on this matter, and we're done to adjourn the meeting. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thanks.